Welcome. I'm going to call to order the board workshop for August 13, 2019. And I'm going to ask that the, as far as, I'm going to ask our vice chair if she would, you know, call out any public comments that we have to present to the board at this time.
Yes, we have two.
Okay. I'll hand over the gavel to you and we'll proceed. Thank you.
Okay. Just so I read our typical spiel, "Public comment is not an open forum to discuss matters unrelated to education, to support or oppose candidates for public office, or to engage in commercial speech attempting to sell a service or product to the school board or public. Also, public comment is not an open forum to attack individual school system employees or board members. Any such complaints should be submitted in writing to the superintendent for appropriate handling. Finally, this is not a forum for addressing issues involving individual students. Because of privacy concerns, such issues should be submitted in writing to the superintendent for appropriate handling. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the board. Speakers must stand at the podium and not approach the dais. If a speaker has a handout to present to the board, those must be given to the agency clerk for distribution. This is a business meeting of the school board and the public expects that we conduct in an orderly, efficient, effective, and dignified manner. We request that speakers keep this in mind when making your comments. We also request that the audience keep that in mind and not demonstrate approval or disapproval of what a speaker has said by clapping or booing. The board appreciates the public's input and will listen attentively, consider each comment, and usually will not respond, enter into debate, or answer questions during comments on agenda items or during the public comment section." And with that, we have two people signed up. First is Mr. Nelson, and after Mr. Nelson will be Mr. Willard.
May I interject? The all board members are present at this time. Thank you.
I'm Norman Nelson, citizen, taxpayer, attention Mr. Minor and the rest of the staff. I'm here because of, at the last meeting when I presented my year, CFO told me Mr. Nelson has a different way of accounting. So here it is. There's a copy for you. Here's how I do it. My understanding of any future forecasts of budget revenues is two things: total anticipated new revenues and beginning balances. You add those two together, you get your funds available. No more, no more. Which I did too, on page two, which is my spreadsheet where I did all this. If you can read this spreadsheet. And also the page numbers from your budget are appeared. And all I did was a simple thing of adding those numbers up on your sheet. New revenue, new revenue. And a copy of those, I put them on a simple sheet rather than look at the spreadsheet. You can look at the first sheet and see that the maximum new revenue is 613 million. Beginning balance is 111. So the maximum money that you have available is 724 million, 631, and 806. Now you can look at page three. Page three. Page three is a copy page of your budget book. And all my efforts have been regarding this number on the front page. You stipulate you're going to have 768. I beg to differ. So I'm going to ask you one question. I've got my, my method of accounting is here. One question, why doesn't the new revenue showing on this individual fund sheet add up to the number on yours? I don't manipulate numbers, all I copy them. I like to have an explanation of the numbers. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Willard.
Chairman, Mayor, Board members, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you. My name is Jim Willard, and I'm a member of the Manatee Clean Energy Alliance. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you, especially in light of the strategic planning discussions you're going to have. The Manatee Clean Energy Alliance was created in 2018 by a group of citizens who are concerned about the climate change in our community. The packet I provided you relates to those concerns. Our goal is to have Manatee County and the cities within commit to the Sierra Club's 100 Clean Affordable and Renewable Energy Pledge. Our efforts have been endorsed by the Manatee County League of Women Voters, the Sierra Club, the Sun Coast Climate Justice Coalition, which is composed of 19 different organizations across Manatee and Sarasota counties. To date, 133 cities, 11 counties, and seven states have made the Sierra Club pledge. Ten of the cities are in Florida, including Sarasota, St. Petersburg, Dunedin, Largo, and Safety Harbor. The urgency of this transition to 100% clean energy was brought to light by a number of studies. There's an international climate consulting group by the name of 427, it shows 424 in the report I've given you, but it's 427, conducted a study on U.S. cities most economically at risk due to climate change. Manatee County was rated number one. In addition, the U.N.'s Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change in their October 2018 report say that we have 10 years to reduce fossil fuel emissions by at least 45% from the 2010 levels, or face the possibility of runaway climate change. Manatee County is developing rapidly with an increase in traffic and vehicle emissions. Deteriorating air quality is not only a health hazard, particularly for the elderly and sick, but also for our schoolchildren, especially those with asthma. The school board can play a huge role in combating this situation by continued focus on our facility energy conservation programs, procuring new equipment systems that are clean and energy efficient, working with FPL to provide solar power from their expanding grid, and phasing out its gas diesel fleet with electric vehicles. A report by the Union of Concerned Scientists indicates that additional warming of the planet, with the additional warming of the planet, we will experience increased precipitation and higher tides. This will affect many facilities in low-lying areas, including some of our schools, like Anna Maria, Kinnon, and Tara Elementary, which are currently in flood zones. Due to the above examples of climate change effects, we urge the school board to make mitigation of its hazards a priority in your discussions regarding strategic planning. You have an opportunity to lead Florida school systems in protecting our students, who will bear the brunt of climate change effects without intense leadership now. There are many resources available to help you in this effort. The Sierra Club, for example, has a comprehensive school energy program that many school systems across the county are adopting. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
Okay. Thank you very much, Vice Chair Messenger. Next item on the agenda is the new strategic plan outline and process. And I'm going to turn the gavel over to the vice chair for leading that. That's according to the script I have here.
No, I'm sorry. No, it's Kevin.
Oh, Kevin?
No, no. Kevin.
All right.
Okay. We're going to have, in lieu of the chair's humbleness, we're going to have Kevin Chapman, you know, talk about this at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board. I'm Kevin Chapman, the Director of Strategic Planning and District Initiatives for the school district. I started on June 1st. So this has been a, I guess, what, a two-month journey so far, and it's, it's been very productive. So I have a slide presentation that hopefully will go on the screen here momentarily, and you have it in front of you. So the, this is really just a draft outline, a blueprint, a place to start from as we begin this process. So you'll see that as I go through the slides. So the previous strategic plan I have a cover shot of, that's just ended. This was a plan that went from 2015 to 2019. And as we begin a new strategic plan, I have looked at this, and I think you all are familiar with the strategic plan. So as we move from this strategic plan to the new process, internally, with the superintendent's guidance and the cabinet, we've come up with a proposed name for the new strategic plan, WeManatee2020. And, and as we go through this process, we'll see if that name works. We'll work with, obviously, the community and then internal teams and figure out, but that's a good starting point. As we know from WeManatee, it takes a community to really have a successful school district, as we all know here. And so as we keep using the motto, "WeManatee," we like that for the strategic plan. The, again, working with the superintendent and the cabinet, we've decided that a good place to start is looking at the next two and a half school years. So this school year and the next two school years, to really concentrate on the strategic plan. Why? Why not do four years, five years? The reason is, and outlined in slide five, we have a lot going on. We have security and safety measures that we need to, that were mandated by the state we need to hit by October 1st. There's many threat assessment mandates that we have to hit. There is a lot going on in that security and safety field that is going to take these next two or three school years to really get nailed down. We have our, the FAD study that happened back in April, the scope surveys that were done in the fall. We just completed in April the State of the Facilities Report, giving a state of facilities. And we have the audit findings. And then when you look to the future and you think about the next millage vote, we've got new standards coming out, it just makes sense that we concentrate this strategic plan on really the next, you know, this school year, which I know it won't be, you know, the strategic plan will be halfway through a school year, but really the next two school years, where we can really nail down our priorities and goals, and then start the process again in the beginning of 2022, so that we can have a proper, and I mean by proper is because I came on on June, and we've already started the school year. But if we start in the beginning of 2022, we can then have a strategic plan that will be for a complete school year, and then decide to do three, four, five full school years in 2022, considering all these things that need to be done in the next two and a half years with the millage vote and new state standards. These are kind of strategic planning goals on slide six. I think the main point to come out of this is that this is not going to be a strategic plan that sits on someone's desk and collects dust, that this is going to not be a stale strategic plan. This is going to be a plan that we follow, a plan that I come before the board here, maybe quarterly, to give you updates on. We'll meet internally all the time. Our budget will be aligned to this. This is really going to be a place where we can put some goals and priorities together, and then make sure that each department is following that as we, as we go through these school years. So as we begin the process, we look at what we have down on paper. Yes, Reverend Golden?
This is my first shot at it.
Yes, right ahead.
I heard that the strategic plan is going to align us, I suppose, operationally and fiscally, financially. Okay? How does this create synergy with respect to academically, with respect to curriculum? Or does, maybe that's a separate?
Yeah, I'll get into that in a few more slides. But our, led by Ms. Yost, our deputy superintendent, that internal task team, task force team, will come up with those academic and student achievement goals and priorities.
That are part of this?
Yes, exactly. And I'll get to that in a few more slides, and then if, I'll answer more questions.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
So as we, as we begin this process, we look at what kind of drives all of this, right? When you, you take our current mission and our vision and our core values, and that kind of is your, is your, on slide eight here, you're driving and you're guiding path throughout this process to get to where we need to be. So when you, when you look on slide nine, this is our current vision and our current mission, which is in our strategic plan. This is something we'll take a look at, if their current mission and vision needs to be changed. I don't know if we'll spend a lot of time on this, but, but this is our current vision and mission, which not too many times we look at. But I think during this process, and I think after this process, we need to keep a focus all the time on our vision and mission. Next slide, on slide 10, is our core values. Again, these, these are mission and vision and core values that are in the strategic plan. These are things that have guided this school district for the past couple of years. So these are areas that we need to look at throughout this process. And on slide 11 is what I titled, "Analysis: Internal Areas to Improve." When you go back to that slide and you, and you look at our state audit findings, the scope survey, the FAD study, the state of facilities, you start to come up with internal areas to improve, areas to focus on as we go through this process. Obviously, district grades, as Reverend Golden just, and graduation rate, obviously improving those, right, to get to an A district, improving our 85% graduation rate. Transportation, which is always an issue, but it won't be after the strategic plan, because we're going to come up with some goals and priorities to get this going. Human resources, I mean, you see some of these things that aren't, aren't, should not be unfamiliar to you all when you look at all those findings and surveys and so on. So this is a place to start, to focus on. And so when you do this analysis, you then come up with some draft focus areas, some draft priorities. Then again, to the board and to the public and to the, to the school district, these five focus areas are by no means, this is it, this is, these are the priorities. This is just a place to start. This is just a place to focus on. When you look at, this is where we need to start. To Reverend Golden's point, obviously, academic success and high student achievement should be a priority of the strategic plan. Strengthening safety and security of all employees and students should be a priority. Because of all, of the board's hard work and, and the staff, we're leaders in innovation. We are leaders in innovation, when you do a language and the WAAS school. So let's continue that leadership. And we're also leaders in technology with our partnership with Samsung and all of the great work that our IT department is doing in all our schools. So let's continue that, that leadership. On the other side, improve organizational culture and communication. I don't think, when we see these survey results and we see some of these findings, I, you know, that's, that's a priority that we need to focus on. And also financial responsibility and quality facilities. And when I get to the next couple of slides, I'll spell these out a little bit more. So let's, let's do that. So, and again, these objectives are not the stated objectives of the strategic plan. These are just internally focused areas, a place to start. And when we start in, forming internal task force, when we start to form a community task force, when we do surveys to parents and to teachers, these are just areas that, that we know already, we want to focus on. So you'll see that on, on slide 13 in the academic slide, slide of priority. And this internal task force that will handle this is the instructional and curriculum team, which just makes, makes sense, led by Ms. Yost, our deputy superintendent. Next slide is strengthening security and safety. That internal task force will be led by our new chief security officer. And that's, you know, school climate, that's mental health, that's our guardian program, that's social motion, SEL. You know, these are areas that are obvious focus areas, priorities. Improve organizational culture and communication, slide 15, led by Mr. Wagner. This, this task force has already met once already, to talk about customer service and how to improve customer service. In here is retention, succession planning, improving diversity, equity, inclusion amongst our staff, employee morale. You know, you could see this list here. So these are areas that we, we know already we need to focus on. So it just makes sense to, to state that as we, as we start this process. Financial responsibility, quality facilities, led by our CFO, Heather Jenkins. In here, you'll see what our, member of our public was just here mentioning. This is, this is the priority where we'll focus on, and you'll see that there, future planning for growth and climate with a long-range facility plan, work at energy savings and efficiency, something that I know Mr. Kennedy has brought up before, to look at ways to, to, to have savings in energy, have, have efficiency, and also to discuss what the member of the public just mentioned as an important topic. This is already a focus, which, which makes sense. So we're going to tackle that through this process. And then the last slide will be led by Scott Hanson, our new chief technology officer. And you'll see, he already has some ideas of his own. You know, he'd like to get to a goal of, of one-to-one wireless access points, the ID scanners, media center. You'll see this list. And also improving on our district initiatives, and, you know, the Cambridge program and dual language and our initiatives that we're leading the state on. So as we start this process, which really today kind of starts this process, because this is what I wanted to present to the board, and, and then we can, this week, we're going to, and you'll see in the next couple of slides, form a community task force. There's already a webpage on our website at manateeschools.net/strategicplan, where both internally and externally, anybody can give feedback on what they'd like to see in the strategic plan. They can do that both anonymously, or can give their name. The email goes right to me. And I, I've already received three or four of these submissions. So again, this is just one way to start, you know, getting that feedback internally and externally on the process. Next slide, slide 19, is, is work that I and others have already, already done. You'll see, I've, I've presented internally at all our conferences and meetings that we have in July with teachers and principals and staff. I've begun the process of going to every school to meet with the principal. My plan, in the next slide, on slide 20, you'll see in the outreach plan, my plan is to, is to get to every faculty meeting and to every SAC meeting, and to show a few slides, get some feedback, show ways that the community and, and teachers can, can provide that feedback. We're going to have a district SAC, district-wide SAC meeting on October 23rd. We're going to dedicate that whole meeting to the strategic plan. So these are obviously important ways to get that feedback, to have everybody have a buy-in on the process. On slide 21 is a, is a list of potential community task force members. Like I said, we're going to send a letter out of invite this week to assemble a, a community task force to meet three times this fall, to get their input and feedback on this. And then on slide 22 is, is kind of a brief timeline. And the goal here is to obviously have the board approve a strategic plan in the first meeting in January, and then to publish it in January. And that's the, that's the goal. And as Mr. Wagner likes to say, and what we've been using internally, is that everyone has value and can add value. And we really want to stress that internally to our, to our 7,000-plus employees, that we really want to hear from them during this, during this process. So at that time, yeah, Reverend Golden?
With respect to your potential community task force members?
Yes, sir.
Would you be amenable, or would you consider adding the Lakewood Ranch Business Alliance?
Yes, yes, very good idea.
To that, to this group?
Mm-hmm. Consider it done, sir.
Thank you.
And the, the goal is, we'll have, as you can see from that timeline, we'll, I'll come back here in a few months to do another board workshop. Obviously, we'll do as many board workshops as you want, but, you know, because I want to keep you all involved in this and hear from you all. So this isn't the, this isn't the first and last time you'll, you'll see me up here, so. Any other advice or questions or suggestions?
Well, one second. Okay. We had a gentleman just before you speaking on concerns regarding climate change and conservation. And how much representation is there in the group of that interest?
Well, I was just, when I was sitting there, I, I wrote down the group's name. So I'm going to find him here once this workshop is over and see if he'd like to join the community task force. Yeah. So your thoughts were mine, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other suggestions? A board member, Kennedy?
Yeah, Kevin, I don't have a suggestion right now. I just have a couple of questions, really.
Sure.
On, and this is just a minor detail, but on slide five, you have listed that the millage vote in November of 2021, that vote's in 2022, right?
Well, we were, we were, we were trying to, you-
What am I missing?
Yeah, well, yes, you would know better than I would.
Yes, sir.
So if that is incorrect, that's incorrect. If, go ahead.
May I respond?
Yeah, board member, hopes.
From, for a planning perspective, should we move, as the legislature has been intending to move consistently towards tax increases being during a general election, we would have to have it the year before? Because the general elections after the Trumanosseous go out in 2022.
Yeah, so it would be 2022, then?
No, no. In order for the tax to be effective in 2022, we would have to have the election in 2021, because we couldn't have the election.
I follow you.
So our plan, from a planning perspective, we need to anticipate being ready to go to the community in 2021.
Interesting.
And that, yeah, that was my thought too, but I-
No, that makes sense, though, yeah. If the legislature gets there to-
Well, they already did it with one tax, so they're probably going to do it with the next series of taxes.
Right. Interesting. Okay. Thanks for that, then, perhaps.
That's good strategic planning.
The other, no, that just jumped out at me, because I was, I'm always thinking 2022, but that is good planning. And then Kevin, on your list of, I'd like, take it to slide 11, for example, internal areas to improve, is this where, in your mind, is this where the board needs to kind of, what are, pick what are, what are our priorities? Do we try to find a way to tie all these together somehow?
Well, I, I think, I think these are all areas that we need to improve on. And so I think they're all areas that the strategic plan should focus on. Now, there may be more or less, but I think until we form the community task force, until we inform, form these internal task forces, and until we survey our teachers, our principals, and our parents, and our students, perhaps, I think there'll be other areas, perhaps. But that's something that we're going to do fairly soon, so that we have an idea of what, you know, what the thoughts are out there. Does that answer your-
Yeah, no, I was just wondering, like, what you were thinking, or you were coming-
Yeah, I mean, again, this isn't me, this isn't Kevin just sitting at his desk, right? This is, this is studying the, the scope surveys that we did in the fall.
Yeah, what you're taking it so far.
Right. The FAD study, and common sense stuff, right, district grades, graduation rate, you know, things that, you know, technology upgrades, security and safety, training, professional development. These are things that we can continue to do better on.
Mr. Thank you.
Any other board member, hopes?
Yeah, and to also contribute to Mr. Kennedy's question, you know, having done this quite a few times, including in higher education, we, as a board, you know, I will suggest that throughout this process, we have our own workshops and strategic planning sessions that just include us in defining our priorities based on our individual experiences with community members and organizations, and because we are the entity that sets those priorities and, and defines the goals and objectives. And so as part of that, I believe, as the administration brings on board the appropriate consultants, it would be my expectation that they engage with us as the elected body and both, you know, help us. And I'll go back to, and I don't know if you got the book, but then I'll, we should go back to the book on strategy, the Harvard Business Review publication, now that we're getting ready to start the process. And I can put together some, you know, sort of like workshop materials that go along with that textbook to get us thinking, because it, it does start with us.
And I would add, Mr. Chairman, that this is a new position. So you, you have somebody now who is going to be alive and, and every day, making sure, you know, we're compliant, we're following the strategic plan, we're, we're doing our due diligence internally to really, you know, follow the metrics and follow the KPIs and report back to you all. So this is, this is, this is a real positive, I think, for the- So, this is, this is, this is a real positive, I, I think, for the district, to have this position here to do this.
Okay. Any other questions? Board, Board Member Golden.
Yes, sir. One of the issues that we seem to struggle with from time to time is the issue of attendance zones, and where people, children are zoned to go to school. And we seem to always be a little bit behind the curve in terms of trying to make it less traumatic, less difficult. And I'm looking at the potential community task force members that you have here, and I'm, for lack of a better word, I would just appreciate some involvement from land developers, realtors, people who are going to be saying that seventy's gonna be four-laned in ten, in ten years, and there's gonna be another ten thousand housing units out there. And so if you're gonna develop a strategic plan for the Manatee County School System, I think it would involve at least some consideration of where we go. We, we just opened three schools last week. I think before that, the last time we had that number was like two thousand and seven. So, at some point, I'm hoping that we can include them in this process, because I'm pretty sure if we went back ten years, a lot of the stuff that we're seeing being developed now, out in the Makasawala area, going out toward Parish, I think that was foreseeable then, but I don't think it was included in what we are, what we're dealing with now. So, I don't know how you do that, but I'm hoping that somehow we, we don't have to keep going round and round, doing that same thing every ten years or twenty years.
Right, no, that makes sense, and we'll, we'll do that, and we'll figure out that way. And I would add that we are inviting the county government on this community task force, and I plan to meet with, you know, the Kevans over there, who study this kind of demographics and growth and all of that, to, to, you know, this is, my, part of my job is long-term planning now. So, you know, we, we know internally where these demographics are going and growth, but to have the county involved in that process as we write the strategic plan makes a lot of sense.
Let me also be real, every time we hear from the developers, they're always surprised that we want more impact fees. Well, maybe if they knew five, sixteen years ahead of time, that it's gonna take additional money in order to provide the additional capital that we need to do the infrastructure to have quality schools, that might be something that they could wrap their faces around. I know we got tremendous support with respect to the last millage, and we just wanna keep that mantra going, not have the community divided over the funding for quality education.
That makes sense.
Thank you. Thank you, Board Member Golden. Board Member Kennedy.
Thank you. Kevin, this is honest, this is an honest question, and this is kind of my first time. We've got an experienced planner, we've got me, a novice at this, because when the last one came out, I was just coming onto the boards, I was not involved in the, in the previous one at all. But, and I'll use Ready for One Hundred, climate change, resiliency, and planning. So how do we, because here we're saying that, as it looks like right now, we want to plan for about twenty-twenty-two to do the next strategic plan. So we're doing kind of short-term planning, in a sense, but then for something like adjusting to climate change, you know, that's a, that's a much longer term issue, and so how, how does it work? Like, how do we kind of weave those, the, the short-term planning and the long-term planning together?
That's a great question, and, and it can be as simple as, and again, I, you know, what I didn't say before is, you know, we have, you know, we have a new superintendent, we have new leadership, we've got, we've got a lot of priorities that are, that are right in front of us that we need to hit because of mandates, so that's why it's a, you know, and I explained in that one slide, all of those, you know, the millage vote, the new state standards that are coming out. But in, for that future planning, in the short term, it can, it can be as simple as saying, stating something and having a study done, or, or having a bullet that says, we are gonna spend, you know, the next, you know, three years or four years, looking at how climate is gonna affect our schools and, and this county, or we're, we're gonna work with such groups, or the county government, or we're gonna sit on this committee. You know, we, we don't have to say we're gonna, you know, build walls and, and, you know, in the short term, but we can say, we're gonna now study this, that this is now a priority of ours, or this is, we're now actually going to focus on this. I mean, that's, that's okay to say in a strategic plan, that's important, to say we're, that's a priority of ours, and then at some board meeting, you can ask me, where are we on this, Kevin? And I can say, well, I've, you know, we've attended these meetings, we've had, we're looking at the, this study, we're, you know, so on and so forth. So, there's no reason why we can't have long-term thinking and, 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 and a focus stated in a, in a short-term, if you will, strategic plan, is that...
No, it does make sense, it does help, and as you're talking, I'm, you know, long, for example, Ready for One Hundred, the cities have signed on to, and local governments have signed on to, I believe, I still believe we would be the first school district to make a commitment to a hundred percent renewable by twenty-thirty?
Twenty-thirty-five.
Twenty-thirty-five.
Maybe that's something, you know, because again, we don't know the cost, the cost to that, but, but maybe that's what we look at, right? For then, we spend the next two years looking at what that would take, what would that cost, what would that entail, what, what does that mean for a school district, in order to say, you know, we're gonna sign on to this? Again, that's just off the, I'm not...
No, of course.
...that policy, I'm just saying that that's just me answering your questions, but, but that's obviously for you all to, to decide, but...
No, I'm, I'm kind of, and this is editorial comment, but I'm, you know, something like that, which, you know, Florida, Florida is, I, I think it's fair to say, gonna be the epicenter for, you know, where we're gonna see climate change effects first, and so for us, is the largest employer, the largest, you know, corporate entity in the county, I think for us to take that leadership is, is important, so. Good for me, thanks.
Thank you, Board Member Kennedy. Kevin, one consideration is, we're all fortunate to live in a community, in a county, with a great Chamber of Commerce. It's very community-oriented, and one of the concerns of the Chamber of Commerce is affordable housing. And that plays into, you know, our, you know, strategic plan as well. How affordable is housing, as well as affordability, for staff to be part of Manatee County School District? I don't see it listed here. I see that Manatee Chamber of Commerce is listed as, you know, being part of this. And we, we have members of our community who almost regularly come up and talk about the need for affordable housing, and I agree with it. And to what extent the resources of the school district can help push affordable housing, I, I would, I would support. It helps our attraction, you know, for teachers and other staff to come in here. Developers are inclined to build the housing that has the greatest, you know, profit, which usually isn't, you know, affordable housing. And I, I don't know to what extent we can help steer compensation, you know, for the affordable housing, you know, for developers, so that, you know, it, it may be that when we have land, we set aside, you know, a, a quarter of the parcel of land, you know, for, for, for affordable housing nearby, you know, for teachers. I don't know, I haven't heard that, it just kind of came to me. But I think that's part of the strategic plan, should be part of the strategic plan, you know, for improving, you know, public education, extending public education in Manatee County, and I'm just kind of throwing that out for consideration. Okay. Any other thoughts? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think that wraps it up for our, our workshop. Thank you all who took time to come down here, and, oh, do we have something else? I'm ready to go, okay.
Budget.
Yeah, oh, a budget. I thought we weren't gonna have a budget this year, okay, okay.
I would not...
Michelle is just piling it on today, okay. Here it is, overview of strategic budget, what do you know?
Thank you. Good afternoon. We're sorry to keep y'all, but this is the day you've been waiting for. We're gonna go for our...
I'm sorry, I thought we were gonna have three or four hours this evening with you, but...
This is very exciting information. It is. So, today, we're, I'm gonna start by telling you a little bit about our property values and millages, and then Stephanie's gonna go into the details of the budget with you. The first slide is just our trim calendar, these are the guidelines that we have to follow. It shows you all the different dates that we have to meet our requirements in order to comply with the trim guidelines. Property values and millages, this slide's interesting, because if you look back at twelve thirteen as compared to nineteen twenty, our property values were twenty-four-point-five billion dollars, and now they're forty-one-point-seven. It's a huge increase over the last several years. If we could see back in the curve-aways, the property values tend to ebb and flow as we go throughout, and when they're the highest, the millages are usually the lowest, because they function at an inverse. At our last board meeting, when we presented the tentative budget, one of our board members asked what it would look like if we had a point-two mil reduction, so we've included several slides to show you the effect on the operating budget. I haven't addressed capital here, we'll talk about that at our next board workshop when we dive into the capital piece. So our required local effort, we won it, over these figures at our tentative hearing is three-point-eight-eight-seven-zero mills, which will generate about a hundred-and-fifty-five million dollars. Capital outlay will generate about sixty million, and discretionary operating is twenty-nine-point-nine million. When you look at that reduction in mills, it would reduce our total budget by one-point-six million, it's eight-hundred-one thousand in the operating and eight-hundred-one thousand in the capital piece. This slide talks about our gross taxable value and our mills, and as you can see, our mills have gone from seven-point-three-three-one-zero to seven-point-one-three-five-zero, which is a reduction this year overall, and the largest, the area in which the largest reduction takes place is our required local effort. Again, that's due to our tax, taxable value being higher. Those rates are set by the state. This slide shows what would happen if we took out the extra point, or two-hundredths of a mil, and that would reduce our millage by two-hundred-thirty-six-thousandths. This slide shows our revenues, and what our increase is over last year. We have about twelve-point-four million dollars more in millage revenue than we had the prior year. With the proposed reduction, it would be ten-point-eight, which shows you the one-point-six million dollar reduction in whole. We've highlighted our, our reduced lines in red, so that as you go back through, you're able to pick those out. The, this slide is, is kind of fun, it shows the impact of millage levies on property owners, including a homestead exemption. So if you assumed there was no increase in property values, your tax bill would actually go down twenty-four dollars and fifty cents. However, through research, well, got ahead of myself, so this one shows the point-two reduction, so your tax bill would go down twenty-nine dollars and fifty cents. Through our research, we've actually discovered that property values are increasing this year, they've increased this year over the last at a rate of about seven percent. So this slide shows, when you take into consideration that increase in property values with our current millage rate, then your tax bill will, will increase close to forty dollars on a home valued one-hundred-sixty-thousand-five-hundred. And it would be thirty-four dollars and seventy-one cents with the reduced millage rates. So what does this mean in total? When you look at the total picture, the tax decrease for our homeowner is about five dollars and twenty-one cents, with a reduction of, of two-hundredths of a mil for the capital and the referendum. And here it is broken down, it shows you how much each different category would be reduced, our STEM, instructional, AFSMI, SAM, paraprofessional, and charter, the different pieces. We've also estimated it would be a reduction in our teacher supplement of a hundred-and-twenty dollars, a reduction in our para-supplement of fifty dollars, and a reduction of our SAM supplement of a hundred-and-thirty dollars, that's school, SAM, and principals.
Mr. Manatee, can I ask a question about this slide?
Okay, yes, go ahead.
That is an estimated reduction, based on what they would be getting next year, not based on what they had got this year?
Correct, it's, we have tentative supplement amounts calculated, we're still finalizing the closure of the year, and that will factor into their amount next year. So this is, is based on a tentative number, we have next year's supplement would reduce by that amount.
But doesn't, I'm so sorry, Mr. Chairman. Go ahead, Board Member Golden.
Go back to that.
Yeah, but doesn't that sort of set in stone the increase that we can agree to? It, it seems like we're putting it out there.
No, our, our supplement amount each year depends on the percentage of the total referendum that they get, so we've divided them up into categories, and our referendum revenue changes each year. As the property values go up, we'll generate more, more funds.
This has nothing to do with the...
We have to recalculate it each year based on the revenue received, and how many teachers we have, what our, our rates are, if we have any funds left over, so each year you have to do a new calculation.
Okay, so that has nothing to do with the, the bargaining between the school board and the, the unions, anything like that?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Board Member Hope. And I think to help, it, it would be helpful if we know what the projected supplement is for this year versus...
It's not by the last year, and we'll give it to you.
Right, the only reason why I'm bringing it up is because, members, if you remember, when, when we were going through, actually with the prior administration, the projected revenue generated by the optional one-mil tax, we projected originally thirty-three million, and it ended up being, what, thirty-seven, thirty-eight million? And for the benefit of, of Reverend Golden, it's a, the, the monies are allocated based on a percent of the total dollars. And so, because the tax base went up significantly over what we originally projected was needed for the supplement, that hundred-and-twenty dollars may actually be, the, the, the total amount may be more than it was last year, or more than, based on the thirty-three million. So even though it's a hundred-and-twenty dollars reduction based on the full one-mil, the question is, what is that over last year's, and what is it over what we originally anticipated? Because as the tax value continues to increase, the total dollars that the fifty-one percent comes out of is gonna increase also. And, and so, so we kind of need to see what that number is, too.
Reverend Golden and other board members, for additional information, slide fifteen shows you the breakdown of the...
Yeah, Board, Board Member Messenger, please.
There was a comment just made about how our tax base continues to increase, and properties are continuing to increase, which, and there was a comment in the last meeting, the last presentation, about how teachers are really struggling to really meet those increases...
Yes.
...in order to buy homes in Manatee County. So, maybe perhaps it would be beneficial to see what the total supplement would be, minus a hundred-and-twenty dollars, but for me, that hundred-and-twenty dollars probably means a lot to that teacher, and I'd have a hard time taking that away, because as we just talked about in the last meeting, or in the last presentation, that's what our teachers are facing. They're facing the increases of seven percent that they now have to pay in order to buy a house.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Board Member Messenger, good points. Okay, Board, Board Member Hope?
Do you have, do you have a slide that shows this past year's supplement amount?
No. No, sir, I do not.
Do you know, just for the teacher, what was last year's supplement?
It was 1,000, no, 4,008.
Okay. So you go back to the slide that shows it's 6,000 this year.
That's not the supplement amount.
Oh, that's, okay. So we still need it in the per dollar. So the question is, what was it last year? What was it based on July 1, and then what would it be based on the .02 reduction?
Right. We will provide you with a number before the final hearing. I just didn't want to put an estimate out that wasn't accurate at this time.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah. Board member Kennedy.
Thank you. First, kind of another editorial comment, and then a question about the, I tend to agree with Gina that not just about, not just about rising cost of living, but, you know, I agree with Mr. Hope's, Dr. Hope's, we took in, we ended up collecting more than we thought when we were planning for the referendum. So I see where you're going with. We took a little more, so maybe we should give it a little bit more, give some back, so to speak. However, I am of the opinion that the Florida legislature could do a better job supporting public education. Florida is ranked, depending on where you look, in the mid-40s out of 50 states in teacher pay. And so that's why in 2018, I think we saw so many counties hold local referendums to support teacher and employee pay because statewide, people are beginning to recognize that our teachers and our school staff are not being valued and are not paid what they're worth. So to me, that kind of unexpected bump was a good thing for our teachers and school employees, and that's why I would like to see us stay at one mil. Because anything we can provide to our schools and our employees, I think, is a good thing because we have to raise it locally. We're not going to get it from the state, so we have to do it locally. A question about, on slide 15, and Dr. Hope's, when you brought this up at the, at the last, we had the hearing and then the 23rd meeting at the workshop, and you, I thought you suggested dropping that from one mil to .8 mills, correct? So that would be a 20, that would be a 20% drop in revenue collected.
Yeah. The question was, Mr. Chair, if I may.
Okay.
The question was to see what that would look like.
No, exactly. And that's where I'm going.
And my follow-up discussion with staff, let's see, based on the increase in revenue that was generated, what a .02 would look like, which is not that significant. And I think when...
That's where I was going. I was wondering why .02...
So, so the, and keep in mind, I'm thinking through, and then I'll, if we don't want to, I think when you see the numbers, you're going to see that the amount of revenue is substantially more than what we anticipated. I think you're going to discover we did not spend all of the one-mil this year, so there's money left over. And I'm looking for 2021 to ensure that we get this tax approved again. And I certainly don't want it to impact negatively on our, the supplement that our teachers deserve and expect, but should we experience, like we have, a pretty significant increase in our tax rolls and our tax values, which generates more money? Because keep in mind, this was the first time out of the box, and the revenue wasn't allocated based on what we think we needed the supplement amount to be in order to be competitive for salaries. It was an allocation based on a percent of what we totally collect. And so when you project that out, you can see that you may run into some unintended sort of consequences, i.e., you're generating a lot more money than what you determined was needed to be competitive. I mean, we had maybe 11 or 16 vacancies. It was dramatic. I mean, it is one of the things that is working. And the point I'm making is where we do have discretion, when we have good, strong financial years, we need to look about how we can change the burden on the taxpayers based on what we need so that when we go to the taxpayers in the future, they see that we weren't gluttons for it. I mean, look, when you're talking about expecting $33 million, and your whole argument was based on we need $33 million in order to be competitive, and you end up with a significant percent increase of that to the tune of 6 million, and you don't spend it all, and then you have, again, a strong economic year with both growth in the tax rolls and growth in property values, a little bit goes a long ways when you're going to the taxpayer and say, "Look, we had the experience that that amount of money increased significantly from what we projected. We were able to pay a very competitive supplement to our teachers and our other employees, or we were also able to build what we needed to build." And then in hard times, I believe voters would look back and say, "Hey, look, you know what? You know, in good times, they only impose the levy that they needed to meet their goals and objectives and priorities." And, and that's, you know, that's where I'm coming from. Because we'll find out that there were a few million dollars that did not get allocated. We didn't spend it. I mean, we have been doing a great job in managing our finances. We are paying competitive salaries and benefits. We're doing a great job of recruiting. And so the point is that, you know, we need to try to do all that we can do with regards to limiting the burden on the taxpayers to what we need. And I think this is a way to do it. It's a very small amount. And we can, as a board, decide that .04, we don't want to touch the optional, the tax for operations. So then the question is, can we, can we take .04 out of the optional capital tax since we've completed building these schools? We're seeing an increase in our sales tax revenue from the half percent sales tax. And so can we, can we take a look at that as stewards of the public's dollars and make a bold statement that we think because of our fiscal management, we don't have to impose the maximum levy? Now, if staff came and said, "Look, it was disastrous. You know, we're going to lose teachers. We're not going to be able to have materials in the STEM labs," then that was the question. The question is, if we do this, what will we not be able to do?
Okay.
Thank you.
Board member Golden. Thank you, Mr. Chair. The scriptures say you don't muzzle a ox that treadeth the corn. And in this instance, teachers tread the corn. And I don't want to participate in conversations where we're trying to parse and figure out how to minimize what we offer to those people who go out here every day and deal with this. If we were talking about cutting our salaries, I'd have a different viewpoint, or cutting the superintendent salary, I'd probably have a different attitude. But when it comes to talking about...
Go on now.
But when it comes, seriously, when it comes, I haven't been on this board this long, but I remember hearing conversations about retention. We can't retain teachers. We can't keep them because they leave and they won't stay. And so one year, we're doing better. We're doing well. We have a little more than we thought. And our first thought is, or at least for some of us, let's see what we can do to not spend all of that with respect to the people who do this job every day. I think if we could give more, we ought to do that, just right out. Because the day is going to be coming when we're going to require more of the teachers than any other part of the system. We always do. I heard my colleagues say, "Now, we want you to go out. We want you to come in and teach. We want you to be a part of the system, and we want you to bear all of the increases like everybody else for what we're trying to do. And oh, by the way, if we have a little extra, we want to think about whether we want to give that to you." I don't think that that's the mindset that at least I have in terms of that. I think that everything that we have extra ought to be used to try to keep teachers in Manatee County, not that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, board member Golden. Vice chair and messenger.
Kind of to piggyback on what Reverend Golden just said, if the, what had been proposed had been decreasing the millage rate for perhaps the core general fund budget, which I don't think we can do, then perhaps I could have been in favor of that. Because I do believe that there are things that we could find to reduce. But it sounds as if your goal was to do exactly what the legislature is doing, at least that's how I'm interpreting it, which is really to keep funds stagnant for political purposes, even though we have a booming economy and growth and inflation, to choose to keep funds stagnant when we know that we have increased costs, especially with something that I do believe we promised to the voters. You know, when we agreed to this one mil that day, I don't know if you were here yet or not. I'm not sure.
He's guilty.
Were you? Okay. There was conversation that day, or even prior to that. I'm not sure you were here for this conversation. Perhaps you were. I don't know. This one took a long time to get there. But there was a conversation in the whole process where somebody made a comment, I think it was Dr. Green, but I have to go back to the video to be sure, about making the wording up to one mil. And I said, "Can we do that?" Because I liked that idea, up to that one mil. And your friend, Mr. Cologne, said, "You can't do that because we're always going to charge the one mil." You can go back and watch the video. That is what he said.
He was wrong.
But that is what, that is what he said.
Say that again.
You go back and watch that video.
To the microphone, please.
Unless, unless my memory is faulty, which is totally possible. I've had a baby sip to the head, pregnancy brain, whatever. So that's totally possible. But that is how I recall it. And I don't believe that we wrote on the ballot, "Up to one mil." We wrote one mil, and that was a thoughtful decision at the time. And I think that if we were to reduce that, I don't think that would really fulfill what the voters voted on. I don't think that's what we said we would do. We didn't put, "We're going to get $33 million." I don't know any literature. If the literature said that, I don't know. I didn't read it all, you know? But what we did say was one mil. That is what they voted on. That is what the teachers supported. And if we're saying this is working, and we're having all these people come, all these people want to stay, why would we want to reduce that? Why would we want to put that into question? If the fear is, we're not going to have this mil succeed, if that's the fear, then we know the people that supported this the most, these are the people that we're going to be hurting doing this.
We didn't win by much.
I'm sorry, you're out of order.
But, but do you see that point?
I do.
If the people that supported this the most, and now you're saying, "Well, you're not living up to what they believed they were voting on." I don't know. You know, like I said, if it had been something other than this, if there were things that we could have found, or they could have found, and they proposed, "Hey, we'd like to cut X, Y, and Z out of the general fund in our core budget," I could have maybe seen that. But that's not what this is being proposed because we can't do that.
Okay. Board member Hope.
There's probably no reason to have this discussion because we don't know how much the supplement's going to increase this year over last year. We haven't seen that number. So the $120 may result in still a net increase in that supplement. So I'm willing to just wait until we see the number. I do believe this board has the authority to choose whether we impose the full one mil or not. And we certainly can do it with the capital. I mean, we set, we set, we set the trinose. The only one that we're bound to, I believe, is the amount that the legislature says we have to charge for the local required, for the required local effort. But I'm curious to see what the projection is for the supplement this year versus last year, and let's see what we're talking about in real dollars. Because we also, you know, and in line with what you're talking about, we can, you know, we managed to not only pay the supplement this year, but we also managed to give all of our employees a significant, you know, increase in their base. But I think you're right. I think you're right. I think, I think what's going to happen, my concern is, that we are going, because it was evident, it was evident from all the projections for Manatee County, that we were going to see a dramatic increase in our tax base and our taxable value. That's why I was so concerned about allocating the dollars based on a percent of the total tax revenue brought in as opposed to an amount which was needed to have competitive salaries and supplements. And so I am concerned, from a real argument perspective, that because of the methodology that we employed and because of the increase in the tax base and the tax value, that we're going to see a dramatic increase in that supplement, we are committed, we've committed to also increase the base pay out of the base budget. And I'm concerned that if we have, if we continue, because it wasn't, it wasn't one year, it's two good years, based on what we originally projected. And so let's just see where this supplement comes in. And I, I am focused on ensuring that the taxpayers continue to support this tax. I don't want it to be a one-four-year tax. I want it to be this, to be able to continue unless the legislature offsets it with additional revenue, much like, you know, Sarasota's been able to continue to renew the tax. But I'm concerned because I think what we're going to see is we've, we've adopted a methodology that merely allocates the maximum amount of money, not based on what we need to spend, but based on a percentage of the maximum amount that we can collect. And I think what we're going to find is, over the course of the four years of that tax, it's going to continue to grow and grow and grow, and we cannot change the 51% or we cannot change the 14.5% or whatever. But I do believe we can, we can look at demonstrating some reasonableness. But that's only my opinion. You know, there's, it takes five of us to do it, but I felt we needed the conversation because I want to be able to go to the taxpayers and the voters and say, "Look, we did a great job of managing our revenues, and while it may not have been the most brilliant methodology for how to allocate tax revenue that was going to continue to increase for a number of years, but that's what we were stuck with because that's what we committed to voters." I would have been much happier had we come up with a formula that based it on a competitive salary so that we were, you know, at or above competing salaries, and that's the tax that we paid or that we generated in collections. But we did not do that. And so as you see a 7% increase, I mean, I don't even know what, what's $120? What's a $120 of what, It's less than 7%. But at any rate, that's, that's where I'm coming from. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Board member Kennedy.
Gina, my memory is similar. The discussion we had back then was either, the conversation was we do a half mil or we do one mil. And, and it was also not, to Dr. Hope's point, I don't believe it was, "We need $33 million, so let's charge one mil." It was, "What can we do with 16 mil, million versus $33 million?" And then we came up with those percentages that you see here, kind of through, you know, talking it out. And I'll just reiterate the same point. I'm, I am firmly on the side of just leaving things as they are because until Florida gets to even the national average for teacher pay, it's not going to be enough. Like, we can, we as a state can continue to put education as a, as a low priority financially as far as, and I realize it's a massive part of the Florida budget. But when you look at where we are among the other 50 states, we are, we are not just in the bottom half, but in the bottom 10% of teacher pay. And I know this is going to sound like tax and spend liberal, but like, it just can't be enough to me until we get to, at minimum, the national average for teacher pay. But again, but I'm just one person, and that's just my take on it. at minimum, the national average for teacher pay. But again, but I'm just one person and that's just my take on it too, so. Tangent over.
Thank you, Board Member Kennedy.
Thank you, sir.
You are not alone. Much of what I've heard, you know, so far this afternoon seems like a repeat of when we were discussing whether or not we would ask the voters for millage. We had a lot of discussion on that. Should it be a half mil, a quarter mil, whole mil? How are we going to phrase it? All of that. Part of the argument, well, if we ask too much, it's going to be turned down. You know, we we need to make sure that it it passes, so I, all of that stuff. It it went on for for months, you know, the discussion. And I don't, I can't count. I didn't need a calculator for the number of people to say, Dave, this is going to go down because people just don't want to pay it. They're not really that concerned about it. And they were proven wrong. They saved our schools. They saved our teachers. They saved our bus drivers. They they saved so much by approving this. I think any talk about we have too much or it exceeded our expectations is as I I can't find the the words bad enough to describe how they frame education for the future, to suggest, well, we got to cut it in order to get approved. That was the argument that was made before. That's the argument of death for this school district. I'm not exaggerating. What we have is a legislature that thinks, you know, starving public education somehow is good for the state and then beating us up if we don't meet their expectations as far as academics. It's shameful. The voters in Manatee County deserve applause, respect, you know, for what they did, how they appreciated our employees, how they took responsibly the fiscal management of our our community. We've based a lot upon what we did, what our friends in Sarasota did and have done successfully, you know, to be a top school district in the state. Our goal, I've heard said so many times from here by Mr. Hope's and others, to be number one in the state, and you don't go about it by pushing down, talking down, you know, our success in raising revenue for public education, yet it doesn't happen. We are on the road to being number one. Let's not take a bend in the road that does not lead us to number one, to make it as attractive as possible for the teachers and best teachers in the state to want to be here, to reward them for what they're doing and other employees. And we're on that road. Any thought about deviating from that to me is treason as far as what we're supposed to be doing as advocates for public education in Manatee County. I'm proud that this board went forward. It wasn't unanimous. But then a lot of people who went for it and were at the victory party, I wasn't. I was out taking down signs and pulling them out of the dirt, you know, all night until about three in the morning when I was dreaming of having a a pecan pie down at Waffle House and they didn't have it. That's a true story. I ended up getting the pecan pie.
It's all right, brother Chair.
Okay, I'm just saying. I'm just saying. Okay, now we're all for it after people, even on this board, we're working against it. And we got it. The people of this district have much to be proud. And we don't have enough. We, when we have, you know, bus drivers all filled up for all of the routes, when we have teachers all over the place coming in here, I'll say, okay, maybe, but let's keep them too. And let's have a fun balance, you know, like Sarasota, that makes them the envy of the state. We want people like in the state to envy us over Sarasota. We want to continue having some teachers in Sarasota saying, you know, Manatee isn't bad. I'm going to come back to Manatee. That's the road we're on. And let's not have rhetoric about maybe too much to put any doubt that we're going to continue this march forward. Our children, the kids, that's why I'm here, why I think we all avow while we're here, you know, for the kids now and in the future, will have the very best possible public education, very best education. No, we can be proud. Let's not talk about in it it in a negative way. So that's what I have to say about that. We worked hard to get it. Let's work hard to keep it and don't use the same arguments to try to cut it down as we did before. Yes, Board Member Kennedy.
Thank you.
Thank you for that impassioned defense of the of our voters. I actually have a request for information because the the twenty-twenty-one question is really interesting to me because my my memory was that we were only allowed to ask every four years, but I'm but I'm probably wrong. So I just wanted to ask the superintendent and our board attorney if we could just have a little bit of research done just to on that general election twenty-twenty-one question.
Research both things. The the question that was brought up on the table of can we reduce what the voters passed? Because I don't know if legally that's even an option.
Mine mine is only about the date.
Right. But I'm going to have him research both of those because it might be a a non-conversation anyway.
Mr. Chair, I can answer the question about the date. The maximum is four years. You can do it more often than that, but there has to be at least a minimum of one year in between two elections.
Okay, got you. Okay. So twenty-twenty-one is good. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Kennedy. Continue.
Where were we?
We left off at, this is the effect it would have on the charter schools by school as well, totaling one hundred sixteen thousand one hundred seventy-seven dollars. Now we're going to move on to student growth, which is very positive. Last year in eighteen nineteen, we had forty-eight thousand six hundred eighty-six F T, unweighted F T E. In nineteen twenty, we're expecting forty-nine thousand seventy-six unweighted F T E, which is an increase of three hundred and ninety. We've done a chart so you can see that throughout the years we have pretty much steadily been increasing in our F T, bringing kids to Manatee County. We hope that we continue this pattern. Our all-fund summary in total, our operating budget is fifty-eight percent of our our budget. It totals eight eight hundred forty-one million dollars. I'll start a little bit about the general fund. The funding components that make up the general fund are our F T E or our students, the program cost factors, the base student allocation, which is the base funding we receive per student, the district cost differential, categoricals, and other adjustments. This is the base funding formula for the F E F P equation, the full-time equivalent or F T E times the cost factor times the base student allocation, times the district cost differential equals your base funding. From there, we go into several other calculations. It's it's very complicated. You can see it on D O E's website that calculate instructional materials, E S E, transportation. We receive these calculations five times a year. Our weighted F T E is fifty-three thousand three hundred one, which is up from last year.
Before you go.
Sir.
I just, I want to make sure I understand what base funding is. This number that you call base funding, is that for all of the schools in the school district? When you add them all up, in order to get to this number, in order to get to the base funding number for all of the schools, you add up all of the full-time equivalents times the cost factors, times the base student allocation, times district cost differential for each school?
Yes.
Okay. And so that base funding number is an aggregate number for the whole district?
Yes.
Does that include all of the schools in the district?
Yes.
That's that's all public schools and all charter schools?
Yes, and charter schools receive their funding based on a D O E calculation sheet. We enter their information into that sheet. And in a couple slides, there's a little bit more information that will help you understand the rest of the piece, but yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. This is the slide. So after we have our base funding, we have something called a program cost factor. So as you see, there's one for base education grades K through three, four through eight, nine through twelve. We have E S O intensive English grades K through twelve. There are different levels of E S E, E S E support four and five, depending on the level of support needed. And then our career in education program cost factor. So based on how many F T you have that fall into these categories, this is what will change your funding, one factor that will change your funding. So if you have a high population of of two fifty-five E S E F T E, that will increase your funding because you have a multiplier of five point five eight seven. Your base multiplier, as you see, is lower and those with higher needs have a higher multiplier. The E S E support level five has gone down fifty-five thousandths this year and the E S O intensive education has gone down four thousandths. They're consistent.
And the program numbers that you have on this sheet for us are all of the E S E support level five students in the district? Two hundred and fifty-five?
I didn't hear the first part.
I'm sorry. The E S E support level five program number, two hundred and fifty-five?
That's the number of the program, yes.
Okay. That's the number. Other program or the number of the people in?
It's the categorization of the program.
Okay.
Program number, not a number of people.
I see. Okay.
Identifier.
Okay. But but however many I do have, I multiply by five point I have seven, five eight seven?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Our base student allocation increased seventy, a little over seventy-five dollars from last year. This, last year it was, I believe, forty-seven cents. This year we're up a little bit. Our district cost differential has gone down, but that that actually means the amount our base funding is reduced is higher. So the cost differential is what they use to equalize all districts across the state, depending on your cost of living adjustments and your poverty level. So this is the summary of all our general fund revenue sources. Our local revenue makes up the largest portion of the general fund at fifty-three percent. Our state revenue is forty-three percent, and then we have a small percentage for federal and transfers to make up the general fund.
Is is there any number that you have presented us here today? A number that we auto-generate, that we just say? Are are all of these numbers made up of a composite that is furnished with respect to each school in this district?
All of our funding depends on how much revenue we receive from our our taxes, what our F E F P, which is Florida Education Finance Program, what those calculations stipulate, how many students we bring in, which program cost factor they fall into, any other additional weights. We have advanced placement, I B A's Cape funding that we also receive that's dedicated to those programs. So everything is contingent on how many students we have, how many individuals pay their taxes. So we actually didn't receive all of our tax collection last year. It was a small percentage. But if anyone defaults on their taxes, then we as a district don't receive that revenue. So that's why we budget at ninety-six percent and we even came in a little bit lower than that. So each year, and last year, our property tax value increased nine percent. Seven, and that it ranges and and ebbs and flows with the economy as well. Did I answer your question?
Well, basically what I'm hearing you say is that our budget is made up of all numbers that are that are inputted to us. There is nothing that we sit here and say automatically, this is what we're going to budget for X this year. It is all dependent on some other calculation from some other source, whether it's the statute or whether it's the rules and regulations from the Department of Education or whether it's the tax collector here who says to us, these are the dollars that we expect to come in. There's nothing that we generate in this school system by ourselves.
For revenues, we budget what we think we're going to receive. We budget some of the other items like grants or collections based on trends if we don't have a number that's provided to us. And for the amount of money that we allocate out to the schools, we have formulas to make sure that we meet class size for our staffing. We have formulas that we follow that we have established. So when it comes to expenses, there are our items that we look at.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. So what we've done in the interest of time, so we can dig in a little bit more to our expense side, we've provided you with total state, total local, total non-revenue receipts, transfers in, revenues and transfers. And to address Mr. Nelson's comment, the transfers were excluded from the new revenue amount, so that is the difference from the cover sheet provided to the board versus the calculation sheet. I did not confirm the figures or do the calculations, but based on what Mr. Nelson had had highlighted, the transfers were not included. We provide you with that amount as we discussed last time at at our board meeting. So we've broken down the general fund into categories. This shows you our federal Medicaid is a large portion. We have R O T C, some different federal through state funding that will come in through the year that we're not certain of at this time. We have state funding. The top category is empty. There's no amount in there. And what that is, is it's local grant or state grants that we receive. We have, excuse me, made a decision to not include that funding because there are a few grants that we will not receive this year that we received last year. So we have to apply for them. And at this point in time, we don't know which ones we will be awarded and we will not, so we didn't want to include that revenue in our estimate. As we are awarded a grant and those funds come in, we'll amend the budget to add that to it. So you can see our our class size reduction, workforce development, F E F P, those are all provided from the state. School recognition, that's based on the fourth calc. That number will change when our actual school grades come in. And then we have our voluntary pre-K, which is a self-generating revenue line. These are also, here we have all the the local revenue. The biggest portion is our taxes and we have several other miscellaneous areas. These are the the revenue lines that we estimate based on trend. School age childcare fees is our E D E P program, which is also self-generating. Non-revenue receipts, transfers in and total, our total revenues and transfers, which shows you the total amount. And now I'm going to hand it over to Stephanie, who will talk to you about our general fund categorical revenue sources and uses.
So the first slide is safe schools allocation. And we receive, the allocation that we receive is two million five hundred and seventy-one. What it really cost us is five million four hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars, four hundred and forty-six dollars. What's included in this allocation is our S R Os, so all of our contracts that are with the county, Anna Marie Island, and some of the other, and the other ones that Bradenton Police. So that would be in our school resource officers, that one point eight million. It's what else we pay in this allocation that we have to fund also out of the general fund over and above what we get in our F E F P payment is the off-duty traffic officers that, you know, will come to the schools and and make sure that our children are safe when they're across in the street. Right off the top, we take the charter school and the alternative school portion as soon as we get the allocation. So that would be four hundred and twenty-one thousand four hundred and thirty dollars. What is also included in this budget is our guardians and the management of our guardians and our new position that we added, which is the chief of security, safety and security. So that's included in that in that number as well. We actually have the chief slated in the security department. Does anybody have any questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Board Member Hope.
Do you do you recall when we were going through negotiations with the county last year on our increased security cost? And they took the position of of not sharing in our increased cost because of their anticipation that the because of their anticipation that the constitutional amendment creating an additional homestead exemption would pass. It did not pass. Do you recall, maybe the superintendent recalls, like, when we were in those discussions, what was the amount of money that we were asking them to put in to, to contribute additionally?
Well, we were hoping that they would at least contribute the existing fifty percent and so forth.
I think it was around this amount of money.
It was. We, we did make adjustments. But they thought that one tax, it was gonna affect their fund balance. And they felt because we had the mileage and so forth. So, they were not able to offer more funds for this.
So, so my suggestion, and I will tell you, I've had the conversation with a couple of commissioners, that, you know, given the fact that they also are seeing a considerable increase in revenue, they had budgeted and planned for a, a decrease of, I don't know, seven million or something because of that, that tax, that it's, it's now time to go back to them and, and, and request that, given this deficit that, that we have from the state and their increased revenues. And the, the, the argument that they presented was specifically that, that constitutional amendment was gonna pass. And they were not gonna have the money. And, and I would like to see us go back to them and show them our expenses. I still believe that it is the municipality's responsibility for safety and security, regardless of where a citizen is at any given moment in time. And that would, that would be my request of this board to join me in taking the position that I think the county needs to, then they have a new county administrator too. So, maybe she's a little bit more cooperative with regards to, you know, contributing a, what I think is their fair share to our cost for security and safety for Manatee County residents while they are in our schools, whether they're faculty, staff, or students. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Board Member Golden.
Mr. Chair. To complete that thought, I think I could be supportive of that if, in fact, the funds that were being provided by the county were for resource officers, for law enforcement officers. I, I would not expect them to bear any of the burden for our guardians, or the guardians that were imposed upon us by the state. But I do believe that it would be only fair for them to consider a supplemental amount for re-resour, for, for, for our resource officers. And I think that they are under the, are they hired by the sheriff? So, maybe what we're really asking them to do is to, in their budget, to make allowances for the cuts that they encountered as a consequence of thinking that the, that the, that the legislation was gonna pass last year and didn't. So, to, to that end, I, I think that's a, a good suggestion. We need to go back to that. Because we can't ever have too many resource officers. As a matter of fact, we got as many guardians as we have now because we don't have the resource officers. So, maybe there might be some kind of quid pro quo there. So, I would support that.
Just so you know, we do pay the guardians right out of that allocation. So, that is what we, we put those salaries to that allocation.
No, but I'm, 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 yes, I'm talking about the additional.
Oh, I know the additional, I understand.
Yeah, allocation only being to provide additional resource officers for the, for the school system.
Thank you, Board Member Golden. I totally agree with what Board Member Hope just spoke about. When we went, you know, to the county commission and asking them to continue with the fifty-fifty share, they basically slammed the door in our faces and our children. I think it was the most shameful day in the history of the county commission of Manatee County. I totally agree that they have a responsibility, you know, for the safety of our children, all other citizens, wherever they, they may be, in schools, on the streets, in a building, or whatever, to, to provide for that. They don't believe that. They don't think the children are that important. I think that's very shameful, and as far as the other. But we made the pitch. And I heard a commissioner say, well, we, we just don't have the money. And by gum, if they, it's gonna even get worse, you know, if the voters approve this amendment to the Constitution. Well, that didn't pass, and they had plenty of money. They were swimming in it to their shame. Did they come back to, you know, provide money for the safety of the children? No, they didn't. And I, that, that's kind of the way it is. And I don't think they're gonna change. I don't think their attitude about the safety of people in our schools has changed. They should all be ashamed of that. But I don't think it's gonna change it. And I, I think it's very unfortunate. I don't think it's even worth the, the gas going down there to ask them. It's, it's pretty strong language, but I think it's a pretty unfortunate situation. Okay. Unless, if this board decided to all go down there and say, shame on you, when you're gonna step up for our children, I would join everybody doing that. But I'm not sure it's worth our time. Anyway, okay. Well, please proceed.
So, the next allocation is our reading allocation, which is two million one hundred and fifty-five thousand. Out of this allocation, we do pay classroom, we pay, hey, classroom teachers. The rentals is software rentals. So, we picked up the cost of iReady and out of this allocation. There's other rentals also, but that was like the big, the big piece of it this year. Charter schools, they get a piece of, of the allocation, which is the three hundred and twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred and eighty-five dollars. And the rest is sitting at the supply level for what the schools need.
Okay, Board Member Golden?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, we've got two million one hundred and fifty-five thousand. Is that spread out of all twelve grades? Or is that spread out over the elementary grades? How, how are we using the reading allocation to raise the reading levels at the primary levels, K through three? Or is that broken down? How does that, how do we do that?
Madam Superintendent?
Yes, sir. One of the main things that we do in our traditional schools with the reading allocation, and as you can see, it's not a lot of money, but, but it is some money. When we see that we have third grade retention and we need to have smaller class sizes and dedicated extra personnel, we do make smaller classes for the third grade retention. We also add a dedicated para to each one of those classrooms. We give them different, kind of a modified bell schedule with different materials that they use in those classes, if they're on that L three hundred list. So, we do use those funds. It does not cover everything. But we do use some of those funds for that purpose. So, we predominantly use it in our primary school, although this allocation is intended for K twelve. But how we use ours is we put that extra money predominantly in our third grade retention area.
Let me, let me go on the record here. Because that's a lot like closing, closing the, closing the horse, closing the gate after the horse has gotten out. Because what I heard you say is that we use most of this money for third grade retention. And by the time we get to the third grade, the deficits that contribute to this are already in place. So, I, I, I would like to have some specific dollars devoted to some specific methods of overcoming the third grade reading gap, then accommodating it after it takes place. So, how do I do that? How, how, how do we, how do, and especially since you admitted it's just a little bit of money to begin with. Where, is there more money that, how do we, because, you know, we're, we're part of this third grade reading initiative here in the county. And I want, you're right, two million. Is that one percent of the whole budget?
It's not very much money, but your, your point's well taken. If you would like, I can give you a list of all the resources of what we're doing to combat the, the issue. So, this is just how we're using these funds. But we have purchased additional resources and materials for our primary grades. We've put in, now we have a hundred pre-K classes, whereas five years ago, six years ago, we had twenty-five. But that's not coming out of this. So, we are using other revenue sources for the purpose of reading and literacy. But in terms of how we're predominantly using these resources, that's it. But if you would like us to, to gather all those programs, all those initiatives, and how much money we are putting in that, and where we're using those funds, we certainly can give you that specific information.
I, I'm not so sure I know how to say this in a, in a, in an academically articulate way. But we have children who are disadvantaged from day one. There are children who showed up yesterday. What I'm really driving at, and I don't know how to say it, but what I'm really driving at is what is the district doing specifically and particularly to, first off, minimize the problems that kids have, that kids have from K, first grade, and to help them to get to the third grade, to be at reading level. If, if, if you get there, I mean, after that, it, it just really snowballs. So, I'm, I'm interested in all of the money that's being brought to bear, particularly on black and brown children, who come out of adverse childhood experiences that impact their capacity to read, the desire to even read. And so, that's, that's where I am. I don't, I don't wanna make any bones about that. The, the two million one hundred and fifty-five thousand, five hundred and ninety-six dollars, I don't, I don't know whether that works out to be five hundred dollars a kid or fifty dollars a kid. But I'm interested in seeing that it becomes as much as it can possibly be from every source. That, that's, that's it.
Sure.
And I, so I, I want to really see that in terms of a, a budget number and keep track of that. That's what I'm interested in.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Board Member Golden.
The next categorical that we receive is the Supplemental Academic Instruction, better known as S A I. Out of, out of these funds, we pay our student support specialists. We pay our deans. We pay for any kind of supplemental instruction needed. So, remediation. We have funds that are put aside for remediating students. We have funds that are put aside out of this bucket of money for summer school. We have funds that are put aside for reading coaches, reading specialists, anything like that. Just, that's what this buck, that's what this pot of money is specifically for. And the charter schools get a piece also, which is two point four, two, two million, excuse me. The next allocation is, that we receive the categoricals, E S E Guaranteed Allocation, which is twenty million, two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. As you can see, it, the total cost of this program is thirty-six million dollars. This does not include our I D A grant funding. This is just purely general fund. So, over and above the allocation, it costs the district fifteen million, five hundred, eight hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. Just like the others, you know, we pay for our E S E teachers, our V E teachers, our gifted teachers, anything that is paid outside, anything over and above what we pay on our, for allocations for our schools, such as, like I said, V E teachers, the S L Ps, some of them are paid from, which are speech-language pathologists. Some are paid from this guaranteed allocation. Trying to go down the allocation sheet in my head. Deaf and hard of hearing, like all those specialty teachers. Some are paid from this allocation this year. What we did do, I got, I got together with Nicole Cox, who's the director of E S E, and we split the behavior tax, twenty-five percent general fund, seventy-five percent I D A. So, you know, at times, it's how we have to split the funding so that, you know, it's, it's equal on both sides and not over on our, on her side versus the general fund side. But over and above, we don't get nearly as much as we, what we need to serve as our children.
Can I ask a question on that? You know, you're talking about that four million. It's kind of gone off my screen, but the four million, five hundred and twelve thousand, one hundred and five dollars. And it kind of split between general funds and, you know, that, which is E S E Guaranteed Allocation. And you, you kind of get together and try to somehow come up with something that's fair, that, that works. But it's, you know, far from what is necessary for addressing the need. And the, the need is at least the four million, five hundred and twelve thousand, one hundred and five. And what, yeah, tell me again, what is the guaranteed, where does the guaranteed allocation come from?
From the F E F P, from, from the Department of Education. It's based on our student count.
Okay.
This is not the, it's not the two fifty-fives and the two fifty-four E S E kids. This is just the basic E S E allocation.
Based upon what?
Based upon how many E S E students we're projected to have.
And somehow, they, they figure it costs a lot less than is reality. And what do we do to bring them to reality? Is this just lobbying or saying, don't you think these kids deserve more than what you're providing? Or what, what do we do? I mean, we're talking a couple million bucks.
It's based on the, all of the categoricals are based, and the F E F P are based on the amount of funding available. So, I believe lobbying may help. Because what they do, what the Department of Education does is they look at the whole state and how many students each district has. And then they allocate their funding based on that. It's, it's divided based on need. We also have something called maintenance of effort that we have to meet in order to receive our grants. So, that plays into a factor of how much we, we spend in this area. And also because they require a lot more one-on-one attention for the certain specific needs.
Okay, so we're fifteen million, you know, short of what we think is necessary for giving these E S E students what they need.
Yes, sir. And we use our discretionary funding, which, we'll tell you more about that in a little bit, too.
Well, you know, at some point, pretty soon, we're gonna be talking with our legislators about our needs. And to say, you know, to them, you know, something like this, that, why do you shortchange us for over fifteen million dollars for addressing the, the neediest of the needy? And we don't even know anything about that, maybe. I don't know. I, I, you know, I, I just kind of wondering. It, it would help a lot if we got fully funded for our E S E needs, right? Okay, thank you.
The next categorical is Digital Classroom Education, which has drastically been reduced this year to two hundred and eighty-two thousand, six hundred and eighty-one dollars. We, this allocation is also shared with the charter schools, a percentage of it. The next is our D J J Supplemental Funding. So, our allocation is three hundred and seventeen thousand. As you can see, we, expense over allocation is a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So, we fund our, we fund teachers, instructional assistants, in our So we fund our, we fund teachers, instructional assistants in our one facility, the jail site, and we have the other facilities that are the port and, I don't know what the other ones are off the top of my head, but we use the supplement for DJJ specific alternative. Okay? No?
Thank you.
Virtual education, we usually, we have gotten an allocation in the past. We did not get one this year. So we have an e-tech program that we fund ourselves, and by statute, we have to have two other e-tech or e-virtual schools to provide to our students. So that's in the $300,000, it's the online virtuals we have to require, are required. And we fund all these people, teachers, stipends, ourselves out of our discretionary fund. So this year, we did not get one. Instructional materials, it's just that. It's our textbooks, it's our dual enrollment textbooks, it is our library books, our science materials that we receive. Our transportation allocation, so our transportation allocation is $7 million this year. Our expenses are 13 million. So expense over allocation is $6,778,000. On the following slides, it'll show you what the expenses are. Obviously, the staff, the bus drivers, the support personnel, all the benefits that go into it. There is rentals, which is trips bar, we have to pay like an annual fee for different things that they have. On the next slide, other purchase services, that is transportation that we have to pay over and above to transport our ESE students and, you know, students that don't fit on the routes that we have or have special needs. So what we did this year was, it's, the price goes up every, like during the course of the school year, it always goes up and up and up. So what we did was we looked at a three-year trend to see what, how much we exactly spent, and we averaged it, and we came up with the 1.3. Diesel fuel, 1.3 million, and the rest is pretty self-explanatory. Supplies, materials for the department. Our teacher lead program is the funding that we give to the teachers for supply money that they get. It's a one-time, $250, I think it is.
No questions?
Yes, Vice Chair Messenger.
How do they receive that? How are they given that?
Well, last year, I believe they got it in their paycheck, I believe this year.
Or an office, or an office depot card.
Yeah, or a card.
So which one is going to happen this year for the teachers?
There's a, I believe that we're going to do the choice again. They have the option.
Oh, so they had a choice, so they could either do office depot, or they could just have it in their.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
They're a participating program, so depending on what, they give pretty good discounts, so it's a decent way to go, but it depends on their teacher preference.
Sure.
Our mental health allocation, 1,282,000. So prior to, or, excuse me, yeah, prior to having board approval for the mental health coordinator, this is what the budget looked like, which was just professional and technical, which there is a contract with Centerstone. So for the final budget, you will see, you will see how it's broken out with the mental health coordinator and the benefits and whatever they need for operational. That's what we use it for. Best and brightest. So best and brightest would come in the form of a separate allocation and not part of our FEFP allocation based on our number of students. So it looks like we've received 4.7 million dollars more in funding, but really, we did not, because this is earmarked for just best and brightest. Turnaround supplemental funding, this is another allocation that is, has specific rules, and you have to have a program sent to the Department of Education as to how you're going to use this supplemental funding. So prior, like I said, we do the tentative budget prior to a lot of things going to the board and being approved. So there is actually a turnaround supplemental service allocation that has a plan that Dr. Craig and Elena Garcia put together. And it's based on the schools that needed this turnaround supplement the most, which...
Mr. Minor?
Because.
Board Member Kennedy?
It's okay, but because, you know, all of our schools did so well this year.
That's exactly what I was just gonna ask.
We don't have that many as we used to.
That's what I was just gonna ask.
We don't have any in the official turnaround status.
No.
But we do have some that do qualify still.
Yeah.
For either SIG or UNISIG funds. And now Onico and Lincoln will be eligible for some additional monies. We've written a grant so that they're able, both of those are able to receive money because they're a D this year, but they're not in official turnaround status.
So it's deceiving, because the allocation's called turnaround, but it's not necessarily like you're in a turnaround state, right? But you have to have a plan, and you have to have it approved, and so, but we don't have, we only have five schools on there, which is amazing. Okay, so our discretionary lottery funds, that is our school recognition dollars, which that goes up or down depending on school grades. And then in that is our school improvement funds, which goes out to the school, this When we get the third calculation, the lottery funds will be broken out, which would be that SIP fund, that would be that school improvement fund that the schools use with their SAC committees. But upfront, we give them the money.
What voice?
And sometimes we don't.
What discretion do SACs have in the allocation of any of this money?
They vote. The SAC takes a vote on how they want to spend the funds, and they expend them based on their committee decision. They use their meeting minutes as backup.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
They use their meeting minutes as backup, so the SAC actually votes on the allocation. And the district decided to give $5 per FTE. We fund that whether or not we receive lottery funds out of our general fund. So if we do receive lottery, that covers it. If we don't, that's an expense the general fund takes on.
Thank you. That's how I remember originally, you know, SACs were used, and part of it was to show the importance of parent involvement with the SACs, and they had a voice, and they had responsibility, you know, for using this money to help, you know, better their schools. And then somehow, I got the impression that that authority was taken away, you know, by the legislature, you know, from the school advisory council.
Sometimes they don't fund it, Mr. Minor. So our district, because the board has always thought it was important, our district has always chosen to fund it, whether the state does or not.
There were several years we did not get lottery dollars.
Okay.
But we still gave the school the money.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. How well, how well do we publicize this important role of the SACs, you know, to get SAC involvement in the schools? That you're going to decide, you know, maybe 50,000 or 20,000, or, you know, a significant amount of money, how it will be used, you know, to better our schools? Bonus for the teachers or buying some equipment, or is there limitations on it? Now, how they, how that money can be used?
Well, you can't buy food. You can't have an ice cream party, so.
Yes, like Stephanie said, you can't buy food. You also can't pay salaries.
You can't pay bonuses?
You can use it for printing. A lot of them use it for printing. If they run out of the printing budget, they vote that they're going to use it for, you know, printing for the teachers so that they have additional funds.
It should not be used for supplements that are covered by the district, so the district pays certain school supplements. It's not meant to increase those supplements either.
Okay, I, do we have a pamphlet, you know, explaining that, you know, to the SACs? I would like to get a copy of it, if there is one. I mean, I'm a big believer in SACs, you know, for public education. The more the parents are involved in the process of SACs, I think the bigger they become supporters, you know, of public education, which is important, particularly come around election time, you know, for funding public education. And I know the superintendent has spoken at, you know, district-wide SAC meetings and gone around the SAC meetings, and I don't know to what extent there is general participation of schools in SACs in electing officers. I think more often than not, it comes down to the, you know, the principal, you know, finding some volunteer to be chair or something, and officers, and there isn't wide, you know, spread involvement of election of officers, or even election of school advisory council members. And I don't know to what extent we're watching that or encouraging that.
I can answer a little bit to that. Heather's department does have a person that helps guide all the schools with the proper use of those monies. There are some rules, but they do have a lot of latitude and discretion, has to be voted on. We, under the instructional side, we do have a person, Dr. Craig, is over all the SACs, and we also have a district SAC committee. We will be having our fall meeting coming up, I think it's September, October, where she's already sent out all the information to all the schools requiring them to be at this meeting, but they do have a requirement to have a SAC and certain membership and so forth. We do have to submit that to the state. It is regulated. I will tell you, some SAC committees are large, and then in some cases, they're not so large, because you have to, these are volunteers. You have to get people willing to come and participate, so some are easier than others. But Dr. Craig, who is working with Ms. Yost, is in the process of setting up the fall meeting. I think, Jeanne, I believe you were at the, we usually have one in the fall and in the spring, and we make you aware, and usually, there are board members that come to that. So we do different trainings. One of them is on the budget. We also talk to them about the A-plus dollars, or that they also are involved in determining how when a school gets recognition funds for improving or maintaining their letter grade, those dollars have to be voted and approved on by a SAC committee. So they do serve a very valuable role in, you know, making sure that they're involved in some of the decisions going on with the school.
Do we have a uniform method of SAC members being elected in the schools?
Well, there is a method. Whether you are able to carry it out, in some cases, depends on how many people are attending or showing up. They do follow parliamentary procedure and the guidelines, and they are trained, and we do have a district SAC committee in addition that has meetings, sends out information, and it's all very well regulated. But if you would like, I can certainly have, maybe at our next meeting, we can have Dr. Craig come and present that whole process and the information given to them, so that you know how the schools are handling their SAC committees.
Well, I guess what I'm getting at is parent participation in this important body. And it's not just some pals of the principal who are running it. And the, one way of participation is voting to have representations on the SAC. And we got a lot of schools, and I guess the answer to the question I asked was, no, there isn't any uniform way of electing school advisory council members.
There is, but again, if you don't have a group of parents coming to be elected, it's very hard to impose that.
Okay, could the board members be provided with a copy of the...
Absolutely.
... the creed, or whatever, method of electing school advisory council members?
Yes, sir.
And when?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, our next slide is our categorical class size reduction. So that is at 53,321,000. What this covers is to keep our class sizes at, for instance, elementary K through three, one teacher to every 18 children. So these, this is what helps our instructional basic units to keep at the class level size. And the next is non-categorical funding, 251,000. So it should cover the overages that we have, but it does not. I mean, it does tonight, it does, but the total, the total cost that exceed the categorical funding is 155 million. So if you took all the overages from the other categoricals that we showed, you would see that, what the difference is. It's kind of sad.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Board Member Gold.
What I hear you saying is that the budget contains 251,442,67, 287 in non-categorical funding. And what I hear you saying is that of the categorical funding in this budget, we are 155,207,798 over, which leaves a remaining discretionary funding of 95,836,489. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. Now, I see that the very next slide shows that there are other federal, state, and local sources of revenue.
Correct.
Of 43,535,99, of which 14,130,000 is transferred in from capital funding.
Correct.
Is it true that the total amount of money that available for non-categorical funding is 95, I'm sorry, yeah, 95,836,489 plus 43,535,99?
It is. However, there are certain pieces in the other federal, state, and local sources that you can only spend on what they're designated for. So ROTC can only be spent on ROTC. Medicaid applies to Medicaid-related expenses. Workforce development, the same thing.
Okay, so let, so I want to go back up then. So exclusive of the other shuffling that we do with these other federal, state, and local sources of revenue, from what you presented to us, there's approximately 95,836,489 of non-discretionary funding. Non-categorical, I'm sorry, non-categorical funding.
Non-categorical.
So it remains for discretionary funding?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Precisely, I'm going to move that all 95 million dollars of that be devoted to improving reading. Is there anything, I need to know now, is there anything that stops us from apportioning that 95,836,489 to improve, as we see fit as a board, what needs to take place here in the district? Or are there some hidden factors that we can't spend, that we can't use that for?
There are. When she addressed class size, that only addresses our instructional units. So we have a lot of other staff. We have custodians, we have other types of teachers that aren't core instruction that go into that 95 million dollars that are paid from there.
Okay, so the class size reduction number is 128... Okay, so the class size reduction number is 128,881,342 plus for class size? Because the class size reduction here for the instructional units is just that. So the, the expense over allocation is greater than 128,881,342? Okay. What is the real discretionary number that we as a board get to pull out our budget knives on and slice up to do, to do the things that we would like to see done?
According to what was funded by the legislature, it's about 6 million dollars. But we have to continue, you know, we'll have to close our year to give you, let you know if that number's a little bit more. But we had 15,261,790 in new funding this year. So from that, we had our best and brightest teacher principal, as she mentioned, is now a categorical. The turnaround supplement is new, Safe Schools. Cost for enrollment and growth for our county is estimated at 1.6 million. Our increase in FRS alone went up about 573, which leaves us with about 8.9 million. And revenue, when you break that down, another piece is committed to expenditures required by the legislature. So the part that's not encumbered is 6.3.
That's, that's the net, net, net that's not encumbered?
In funding, yes.
Okay. And Mr. Chair, because this is my first budget meeting, where does the line form for that 6 million dollars? Because I've already heard the superintendent say that the 2.155 million dollars for reading is very low. Yeah, 2,155,596 is very low. And so I want to know where, which, which, where does the line form if I want all of the 6 million dollars? And I just heard Dr. Hope's go-
I can, I can, I think partly behind the MEA is, is one line member.
Partly behind what?
You haven't had those negotiations.
Partly behind the MEA. Out of that 6 million, that's, that is in part what you will have to make the decision on compensation and/or other items that you deem important.
Okay, so that's number two. In my mind, number one is still reading. So what else other than?
That's it?
That's it.
I think you're talking fund balance, too.
Is that right?
And the fund balance, yes, sir.
So you have to have a fund balance that-
Oh, you betcha.
Three percent?
Minimum.
Minimum.
And that, how much we have in our fund balance affects how much we have to pay in interest on borrowing. And so it kind of, you have to balance those needs. If we have to borrow more, we're losing more. And that's part of the magic of the budgeting, so.
Well, I'm, I'm one of those tax and spend liberals that Charlie's ashamed to be identified yet. So it's all right. But in all seriousness, I, I would like to have, whatever kind of a time we get to discuss, I understand everything that's been said, and I'm sure all of my colleagues do too, and they've been through this more than once. But I'm more interested in how we can take the little that we do have available and make the most out of it. And I'm, I'm going to always vote for reading, always, because if you can't read, nothing else really matters. And so I'm, I'm just going on the record now saying that I'd like to have that discussion before we get to the final, final, is it the, what is this called? The final, final budget? Is that how I guess?
Final budget.
The final budget? Because I think we want to, that's where, for me, the rubber really meets the road. And I'm, and I appreciate this. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Board Member Golden.
I'll take advantage of that.
Board Member Hope.
One of the things, and I have to commend the administration because they, they have, they have dramatically expanded it, as you may have heard in our Council of Governments meeting, about what the difference we have made over the past at least two and a half years that I've been on the school board in expanding the summer reading program. And, and one, I believe, and I believe the data shows, one of the, the biggest differences we can make, and we did expand the number of schools this year that were open for summer, is to open as many of our schools as possible in the summer and provide five days a week, full days, for those children to go to school in the summer and get all of those enrichment activities as well as to continue to, to work on, on reading. And so I would like to continue that trend and invest it in, in, in ensuring that these children, that, that, that need, that, that continued, you know, education in the summer, have it. And I think for the, for those that you continue to talk about, you know, it provides a safe place for children to go in the summer and, and, and get breakfast, lunch, and snacks. Parents don't have to worry about what their, where their children are in the summer, they're in our schools. And they're learning, and we can mitigate that summer slide.
And I was going to ask Vice Chair Messenger, you are talking about the summer slide. Is there any way that we can incorporate not only the use of the money to prevent or to minimize the summer slide, but to begin to identify early at first grade and second grade, those kids who are falling behind, use some of this money? Well, I guess that's a slide, too. But if you never get out the gate, you can't get further behind, you just stay behind. So maybe, I'm really asking that some of this money can be used to try to maximize the opportunity for the first grader to come back to the second grade and have a better, you know, and close that gap. That, I don't know how to say that academically or curriculum-wise, but that's, that to me, I think is what, is what I, where the most help could be.
Okay, Board Member Messenger.
I just want to-
Vice Chair Messenger, yes.
Doesn't matter. I just want to touch on kind of what you just spoke of. I agree, the summer programs are important, especially in the Title I schools, it really makes a lot of sense. But in a lot of the schools that I think you're referencing where they already come in behind, those schools are typically in the L-300, which is the lowest performing schools in the state. And those schools get an additional hour of reading instruction already. And I believe we have 11 of those schools. So we have 11 schools that already get an additional hour. And the, if I believe, that additional hour is not the core curriculum, it's a different curriculum in addition to.
That is correct.
And the benefit of that is, in a lot of those schools, there might be different curriculums that might impact different populations and help different populations and maybe add enrichment activities. And so the great thing about that is you can add different curriculum than what they normally get in their core program that might reach a kid that their core program may not be reaching them in the same way. So it offers really a whole different opportunity for those kids. And like I said, we have, I think, 11 of those already, and, and, and that is just a straight hour of reading.
And, you know-
And usually snack.
I hear what you're saying, except that the difference between the summer and the ordinary school year, particularly for the brown and black populations, is that they don't have the transportation to get back to the school sites. And I'll just be transparent, I'm really trying to advocate for community centers, churches, or any other organizations that would be interested in being involved in helping us to overcome the reading gap, that once you get to the third grade, it becomes very, very difficult to overcome. And that, that's about as transparent as I can be. I, I'm just wanting to involve everybody in helping us to overcome the, the, the reading, and I'm going to call it the non-reading trap that our children get in early on and they never seem to be able to get out. So I, I understand what you're saying, but for kids that live over there on Fifth Street, near War Temple, who don't go to school down the street to, to that elementary school or who are bused, or the children out in Somerset who get bused, or the children over in, in the inner part of Palmetto who get bused, they don't have that busing to go to the schools in the summer. And I'm trying to open it up so that if you just get the kid to that church or down to that center or whatever it is, they, they can get what they need. And that, that's where, that's where I'm, I'm headed for more than anything.
Thank you. Board Member Golden and Vice Chair Messenger. I don't think anybody disagrees with anything that you've said. And I think that really, this district in particular has made great strides in going down the path at which you are advocating, which isn't to say there's more to, can be done and should be done and new support being done. And we're getting there. And I think it's reflected in our, in our scores and the improvement of our schools and the most important thing, the importance of our, the improvement of our students. So we're getting there. But the more we can do, the better, and I appreciate that. Okay, ladies, I think we got about 15 minutes before we're supposed to break for the regular meeting, so let's see how we can move along here.
We're just going to speed it along, how's that?
Okay.
And this was all really great conversation, though.
Yeah.
Okay, so the next, the next series of slides will show you general fund by expenditures by function. And the only, one thing I just want to point out about these slides, and you can look at them, and if you have questions, you feel free to, you know, email me, I can answer any questions you have. There was a handout that I had, I had provided, yes. So last year, when the budget was created, last year, they included the general fund grants in that 1819 budget number. So what I had to, so what I had to do was back that number out because we did not do that. And this, this paper demonstrates how it was backed out per function. So it's not, it wasn't a whole lot of money, but 4.5 million dollars, because I started looking at the numbers and then I had said to Heather, I'm like, something doesn't look right. And then she said, wait, grant funds were in there, you know, general fund grants were in there. So I wanted to provide that for you so that you could see, you know, if, if you take the first slide that I'm at and you take off what the grant amount was, which was 4.2 million, off of the 1819 budget, the budget amount without the grants was 297 million. So it, because I was looking at the, the change from budget to budget and I'm like, 4.4 is just the, is, is just the best and brightest alone. I'm like, what's wrong with this? But that was the, that was the difference in the numbers. So in Function 5000, real quick, like, is all of our instructional salaries, we house a lot of, I also gave you another handout, hold on. So there was another handout that I had given you of the reserve. So you could see that there's a lot of things that sit into the, sit in the reserve in the Function 5000 that then gets pushed out to the schools. And again, if you have any questions, feel free to ask. So in essence of time, I'm not going to go through each slide, if that's okay? Yes? Okay. So just go through pupil services, you'll see that there's difference, but then you need to just look at the key that I gave you that shows the grant fund number backed out. 6200 is instructional media services, that's the media specialist, books, et cetera. 63, 6300 curriculum, you know, there was a reorganization of, of things that, of how things were coded last year versus this year. That's where the differences are. Instructional staff training, just keep going, okay. Instructional technology. We did not, when we received the allocation, we had dispersed it and then we had to take it all back because we thought we were going to get the same, close to the same amount we had to the preliminary budget. So it actually, we put it back in Function 5000 for the final budget, it will be in that function, 6500. Just real quick, so 7100, which is the board, what's included in that increase is the internal auditor department and just the normal increases from last year. General administration, the over budget, the budget change was, we have a Kevin, Director of Strategic Planning and Secret, and Secretary, and also the Secretary Assistant for Mrs. Saunders, Superintendent Saunders. There is an upgrade to an OPS, the OPS investigator's position, his assistant, she was called a registrar, they actually upgraded her to the research specialist, which is really what she does. And we added two new lobbyists. School administration is just that, it's the principals, et cetera. 7400, which is facilities acquisition and construction, that's where our transfers take place.
I'm sorry, I need you to back up one second.
Yep.
To the principals.
Yep.
The principals.
7300.
How much?
It's Function 7300.
Oh, okay. The total amount?
So the total amount that's budgeted this year is 26,140,000.
And that's, that's a function of experience and longevity, so each school is a part of that.
There's a lot of different things that make up that 7300 function.
That determines the amount that you would get as a specific principal. Well, it comes out of that pot.
It comes out of the, it's-
That's my point.
-budgeted that way, and then there's different, there's also different positions in that function.
I understand. But the point is-
He did that, too.
Okay, is there any, is there a principal in here that gets to set his or her own salary?
No.
Okay. Now, you're sure about that?
Sorry, I don't know.
Nobody, and it, so this is reviewed and dealt with by, who does that? Who, who, who comes up with that number there?
Who comes up with what?
The 28, 26,147,89.
That's the, sorry, that's the sum of all the people budgeted in that function. Functions and objects are ways to categorize our funding.
Okay.
So all of our principal salaries, all of the clerical positions, everything that's within that function makes up that number.
But no one principal
No.
determines that principal salary?
No.
There's a rubric that HR has based on years of experience, size of school, Title I, et cetera, that was established in 2014 when you had to change the metrics of administrative salaries.
And every public school in this county has to abide by that rubric.
Every traditional school in our district follows that rubric when they're hired and placed on a salary, yes, sir.
Are charter schools required to go by that rubric?
No, they're not.
Okay.
No, they don't have to follow that.
All right. They don't. There's a whole bunch of rules they don't have.
Just so you know, I also gave you also another handout, just to help, also like for, to help you see what is under those functions. So you'll see in the 73,000 function, it's the principal, the assistant principal, the dean, secretary, bookkeeper, registrars, they're all housed in that.
That's right.
Okay?
But there's a rubric that deals with all of them.
Yes, with every, with all of them.
Okay, Board Member Hope says a question.
I believe that our approach to setting these salaries should set the standard for usual and customary salaries for principals, regardless of the school. You did hear that, right?
Oh, I heard you.
Okay. But Board Member Hope recognizes that what we figure out is equitable justin and incentive should be followed, maybe even by charter schools, and because it's so wise. Okay.
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to laugh that loud.
Well, I'm inferring, okay. But it's not done all the time. Okay. Please proceed.
That's okay. So 7400, like I said, is, is where our, you'll see our transfers, that's what we use for the function. So it's the capital outlay transfer for the charter schools, any of our capital transfers from, to and from the capital fund to the general fund, that's what those are for, plus the construction department, if there's any changes. Fiscal services, 75, is Function 7500. I did this year budget 500,000 in the reserve for any unexpected financial- the construction department, if there's any changes. Fiscal services, seventy-five, is function seventy-five hundred. I did this year budget five hundred thousand in the reserve for any unexpected financial needs, which have already been used for some things. Lots of times, you know, things will happen where they say, oh, we need, we, you know, this happened, we need to do this, or, you know, even like, we had Irma, we needed extra funding and whatnot. So we, I reserved an X amount of dollars so that we knew it was earmarked for anything like that, any surprises. The rest, seventy-seven hundred, central services. The safety guardian budget was relocated from seventy-nine thousand to this seventy-seven thousand function. That was the difference. Seventy-eight hundred, transportation, there is an increase, like I had explained, in the categorical transportation amount. Seventy-nine hundred is operation of plant, and the reason of the reduction is because we reclassified where the guardians at, in which function. Maintenance of plant is for maintenance and operations. Eighty-two thousand or eighty-two hundred is administrative technology, there has been some increases in our rental software, which is as normal over the year increases. And then we also had to purchase, you know, additional rentals for our cybersecurity measures, et cetera. Last function, ninety-one hundred, this is where our non-faculty coaches get paid from, any part-time people, and also our extended day enrichment program is housed under this function. And then the rest of the slides just gives you, it gives you a breakdown, like, per object, and how much it was last year versus this year. I'm just going to go, instead, go, I'm not going line by line, because we don't have that much time. I'll go through them. And if you have any questions for the differences, please, again, feel free to.
Any questions?
I, I only have one question, but it's on one of your very last slides.
Well, which, well, this one's really small, I know, this is, I apologize, but.
Lincoln Middle School.
Okay.
I just wanted to understand for my own, like, I just need to understand Lincoln Middle School's line, because we're calling it Lincoln Middle School, but it isn't, doesn't it have its own school number?
Yes, this is previous, so seventeen, eighteen, they were our school.
Right, I understand that.
Eighteen, nineteen, we still take, we still took care of part of the building, because it's our building.
Okay, I, I guess I understood that logic, but then when I went to go, for instance, isn't that also true? Oh, no, we sold.
The, the utility amounts were reduced.
Rowlett?
Rowlett Elementary is ours.
Is ours, and I didn't see that on there. So I didn't quite understand, I thought, well, maybe that was my understanding of that. But then I didn't see, I didn't see, maybe I'm missing it, but I didn't see Rowlett on here. So if that is it, because we take care of the building, why isn't Rowlett also on here?
But I think that we house that under a different, once this goes off, that seventeen, eighteen number goes off as our own school, I believe that we put the, correct me, we put the utilities for the buildings that we own under a specific program.
Okay, like utilities?
Yes.
All right.
There is a program that's specific to buildings that we own, that we don't have our, our traditional students in.
Okay, I just needed to understand why that was there, and the school number and the all, but I think I get it, what you're saying now. So once that, once we're, next year, then that will just go under utilities, is what you're saying?
Yes, there is a, a program, correct, Gina? That has the, yes, there's a program that has those, that don't, that we do not, we own the building.
Sure.
But we don't have, we don't have our students per se in there, that we still pay a portion of it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. I'm just going to.
Any questions?
Just one last question?
Yes, Board Member Hope, or Golden, thank you.
Has anything that you've reported here today changed the fact that we've got about six million dollars in discretionary funding?
For reading?
No, well, not for reading. I'll, I'll give everybody a fair shot, but, but seriously, I just want to be clear in my mind that that's kind of about what you're dealing with. That, that fair enough?
The fund balance, don't believe, we still have to make our fund.
Well, I'm sorry, other than what the chair did say about maintaining a fund balance, making sure that we maintain our fund balance.
Yes, right.
Which, which brings up the question, where on here do we have fund balance?
Very last slide.
Okay, very last slide.
Okay.
So ending film, this is on page twenty, or eighty-eight.
Yes.
And that's.
So just so you know, that we are not finished closing out eighteen, nineteen. So we're not going to have an accurate number until we're finished closing out and we have our ending fund balance for eighteen, nineteen, which then is our beginning fund balance for nineteen, twenty. So these are purely estimates. I will tell you that our, we were very close, and we have funds left over for our encumbrances that we did, the POs that we rolled forward, we were really almost dead on. So our estimates have been really close. Maybe like five hundred dollars we had left over or something. So at this point, we don't have a firm number.
Okay, thank you very much. Excellent presentation. Any other? Okay, it's time to wine and dine, I think. Okay. Is there anything else that we have? I guess we can bring this workshop to an end. Thank you all very much, it was very, very good workshop, okay.